Okay, so we're back in open session. Chris, can you read the?
Yes.
The Ipswich School community is committed to developing in all students the knowledge, skills, and attitudes needed to succeed and excel throughout life.
The announcements. The school committee will be presenting the FY19 school budget to the Finance Committee over three nights, March 13th, 14th, and 15th at Town Hall, Meeting Room A at 7:30 PM. The Policy Subcommittee will meet on Tuesday, March 6th, at 7:00 PM in the Middle School-High School Guidance Conference Room. There will be an Athletic Subcommittee meeting on Wednesday, March 7th, at 6:00 PM in the Middle School-High School Guidance Conference Room. Are there any other announcements? I'm going to hold special acknowledgements in case Brian has some citizens comments. Sure, you want to come up to that microphone? Thank you.
Carl Gardner, Woods Lane. I'm here for a couple of reasons. To follow up on a question I had asked at the last meeting before the schematic plan was submitted as to the cost, the appropriateness of including the cost of the OneDrive school disposition, whatever status of that building takes after this process or during the process. And I would just, I wanted to ask the school committee rather than Kevin Murphy, who responded to the question, see what your thoughts are about including the cost for either mall falling or doing something with the OneDrive school rather than simply having an article and transferring it to the selectmen through all the selectmen because there is a community cost associated with ending the use of that building until its ultimate disposition is decided upon either by the school or by someone else. And I just want to get your thoughts if possible, either now or at a future date, what your feelings are about that because it is a real cost associated with the construction of a new school and a new location. And secondly, the number that's been floating around for what is called operational savings, an estimated $400,000 a year by consolidating the elementary schools into one building. I've yet to see a breakdown of how that, that limited savings is calculated. Is there such a document that exists that breaks that down and indicates where the savings are anticipated? Is that available publicly right now?
Actually, tonight at our Budget Subcommittee, that was one of our agenda items, the costs around the school, the school building project. So part of what we discussed tonight was to take a closer look at things like the organization of the building, transportation costs, work on some potential solutions around that new school, and then the, so we can kind of get a better handle on cost savings.
Plus, we had initial estimates on energy savings and the heat and so forth, energy increases in electricity, which were just gross projections based on square footage previously, which you can refine with the building actually in place. We now have the heat in our lives, we can find what we need to do. And we have to commit or at least have a sense of what our model is going to be to look at the personnel issues that are going to affect us. I think Carl had a couple line proposal for where the savings would come from at the time we had a Budget Committee meeting about that. It came in a short document. I don't know where that document is found, but probably here and a half ago. So we can probably get that up.
Yeah.
So what I'm, what I'm, it comes down to is the number $400,000 was presented by somebody, and it sounds like they're still unsure of what component should be incorporated, any figure, and maybe that figure is subject to change depending on what you decide to incorporate within the operational savings by consolidating two schools into one building. Is it primarily staff? You know, what's included in that and how did it become a public figure that's being promoted by the OneSchool supporters? It's on their website, it's been kicking around and being used. I just don't see any evidence of where that figure came from, and if it's not a legitimate figure, I would hope that this board would point that out and say it's still a work in progress.
I think that was, that went way back to when we were proposing BILEC, and we had gone through the energy savings, the administrative model, transportation savings, and several things. And, you know, again, back then, I thought that model was a single page.
I can answer that.
Well, let me, before, yeah, but before we, before we go there, though.
Mine is not on.
This is.
Mine's still dark.
You want to use, this one's, this one's on.
Doing a terrible job.
But before we, before you respond, Carl, I'm wondering, help me understand your, your question because the $400,000 figure was in the newspaper as, as coming in, the school project, I think.
That's something else.
That's different.
That's different. It happens to be the same number.
Okay, that's right, that's, and I apologize, but that's what I wanted to make sure.
Yes, that's not what he's referring to.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, there was a, the number, okay, there's, the, there are a number of considerations with, with the building, obviously, around costs. When it comes to cost savings, there was a, an analysis done by the previous superintendent to come up with some estimate on what potential, it wasn't definitive, but this was early, probably nine months ago or so, something like that, maybe longer, to do a preliminary estimate of any savings that might be associated with the building, in particular, looking at changes having to do with some of the fixed costs like staffing. And at the time, there was an estimate done of the potential savings, and that's where that $400,000 number came from. It was shared publicly by the previous superintendent. It was, I think, documented in some of the town meeting warrant articles.
I'm pretty sure we circulated the piece of paper at TriBoard.
And I think it was shared at TriBoard as well.
So what, I mean, obviously, if you're going to come up with a figure like an estimated $400,000, it's got components to it.
Sure.
Was there, you know, estimates, a breakdown of where those, how that figure was derived? And is that available in the public realm right now?
I don't know if the details, Joanne, you may know whether the details of that, or Brian, you may know, were.
I don't know, but what I would, what I would say is, at this point, I would hesitate to put that out because it's not an accurate reflection of where we are now. I think now that we have a building designed, we have an idea of, a better idea of what we're looking at in terms of, of the, the structure of the building, the layout, utilities and all of that, I think that that work needs to be redone. Because I don't know that that $400,000 figure is an accurate number today. It may very well have been a very accurate number based on a year ago or nine months ago, or however long ago, but to say that that $400,000 figure is accurate today, that's not something that I would agree to.
And relating to that, there, back in the late fall, Dr. Ken Cooper appeared at one of the meetings and brought up the issue of the school being too big and making it difficult for an administrator like himself to manage the school in a way to make it feel small, and however you want to define that. And I know that's been one concern all along, how do you deal with that? And it, at that time, it was emphasized by the plant, by the school committee that you felt that you should make that decision sooner rather than later, like early this year, like it was projected into January at that time. And to me, it still seemed the can, as the can is being kicked down the road as to how the school will be administered and structured with grade levels and what part of the school, who will be overseeing what parts of the school, and, you know, I think that's an important factor to be upfront about to the community in advance rather than saying, oh, this building gives us so much flexibility.
Yep, understood.
And without actually specifying what your flexibility is heading, which direction, then it's hard to evaluate how such a large facility would be made to feel small. So I would, if you could follow up with me on, and if that $400,000 is, the previous breakdown is not publicly available, then I would encourage you to ask the OneSchool people to withdraw that figure from their website because it no longer has bearing on this project.
Well, I don't, I don't think that's what I heard the superintendent say. I would, I want to speak for you, Brian. I would say, that is the most accurate number we have to date. Should it be studied and analyzed and confirmed? Absolutely. Does it mean it is invalid? I would say absolutely not.
Okay, if it's, if it is, I know I'm not saying it is invalid, but if you don't break it down and document how it was estimated and how it was calculated, then from a public perspective, it is meaningless. You really have, you can't, how much of that is staff savings? How much of that is energy savings? And if you're comparing the energy savings, are you comparing it to two old buildings or are you comparing it to two schools that would have been renovated and added onto? With that, to me, is a more valid comparison. I mean, there's a lot of questions that would, on face value, when you look at an estimate like that, that would make it less credible. At Dr. Blake, I would agree with him that at the very least, something like that should be updated with new assumptions and new.
More detail.
Reasoning to support a figure.
Right.
Okay.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Dr. Blake, do you have any special acknowledgements?
I do not this evening because I'd like the people to be here that need to be acknowledged.
Okay. Any other?
Madam Chair, can I just say that, just put a, give a shout out to the robotics team that'll be heading to?
Wyndham, New Hampshire.
Wyndham, New Hampshire for their first competition this weekend. Lot of, lot, lot of long hours and hard work have gone into their creation, so.
Fantastic.
They're headed north.
How many people, how many different teams are they competing against, do you know?
Oh, there's well over 100.
Yeah. It's two days of competition, Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah, the format is that when your team is eliminated, because they, the contests themselves only take a matter of a few minutes, and if your team is eliminated, then you, you are paired up with another team that you've, you know, they'll say, yeah, we want Ipswich or whatever. So now you combine efforts with another school district and you go back into the competition again, so there's, there's second and third chances to do well, just the.
That's great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sarah, can I do one more?
Please.
Just a special kudos to Kathy Smith, Kathy Sims. She was.
Yeah, that was great.
Yeah, there was an article that Suzie Boss wrote in Getting Smart, and it was about the project that Kathy did with middle school students that led to that social media campaign that ended up raising the, or completing the million dollar goal, so, great job.
That's great, thank you. You kept sending that.
Yep.
Any other announcements? Thank you. Chris?
Well, I don't think there's ever really been a better time for February break to come. It was last week. The Florida school shooting really hit us pretty hard. A former Ipswich student actually attends that school, and a lot of his, all of his, like his friends here received videos and updates while it was going on. And the week before break was really stressful for everyone, and there was a lot of kind of like fear throughout the school. However, this week has been much more relaxed and calm. The assembly on drug use was received really well. We found that very interesting and informative, and we're glad to hear that there's a safety assembly on Friday, or tomorrow. And so, yeah, we're very interested to see what like the protocol is now as it's been updated. Cotillion is still currently on despite the impending storm tomorrow. However, kids will have to ride a bus there and back. And, but students are a little concerned about the weather, particularly the ones living on the neck because of the coastal flood warnings. So, yeah, that's a bit, bit of a concern, but the Interact Club is doing a blood drive on March 6th in association with the Red, the Red Cross, and the Class of 2019 is doing a screening of Zootopia next Friday. So, yeah, that's it.
Any questions for Chris?
Yes, good evening and welcome back. I hope everybody had a good vacation week. Last time I was before you was to present my budget, which we'll be having a public hearing on here shortly. We have a lot going on. It's been a busy couple of weeks. I participated in the screening interviews for the Newtown manager, who's a very good process to be part of. We have, the screening committee sent three candidates on to the Board of Selectmen for their interviews. Those interviews are actually taking place on Saturday morning this week. I believe they're scheduled from 8 till 12, and those meetings, I believe, are open to the public. So three strong candidates moved forward. All three of them are folks that, that were, would be, would be good to work with, you know, moving forward. I had no, no concerns about any of the three of them, so looking forward to see who the Board of Selectmen picks for that position. We've had a couple of policy Subcommittee meetings, although we don't have policy coming forward this evening because we wanted to get through the entire section and we didn't. So I didn't bring that forward tonight, so we're going to take that off the agenda. I meet with the athletic director and the tech director monthly, so I had those meetings within the last few weeks as well. I've been meeting with a myriad of parents around a couple of different issues in the district. I attended the AASA Superintendent's Conference in Nashville the week before last. Some of the sessions I attended were on school safety. We actually had the Superintendent of Schools from Newtown, Connecticut, who took over after the incident in Newtown. Talked about safety plans and planning and the reunification efforts after an incident, which is something that is left out of a lot of plans. What happens, okay, you have an incident, so what do you do after the fact? How do you reunite students with parents in an orderly fashion and, and, you know, maintain the safety and security of, of the area? Also attended sessions on strategic planning, social and emotional learning, and defining the portrait of a graduate. Some of the speakers that I listened to, keynotes, were Salman Khan of the Khan Academy, talking about the future of education, fascinating, very nice guy, and Doris Kearns Goodwin, who's a, she talked about leadership lessons from the White House, presidential historian. She, she was great.
She's funny.
Very engaging speaker.
Yeah, she's really good.
We've had negotiations, planning meetings, and we've started negotiating with the teachers' bargaining unit. We had the final vote and meeting for, and the value engineering for the school building project the week before last, and of note was that it did, we came in at about $400,000 under the, under the projected amount. I met with John Hubbard, who is the Emergency Management Director here in town, just to talk about school safety issues, and those, those will be ongoing meetings. With Bill Hodge out on medical leave, I've been doing some custodial interviews in between everything else because I've got a couple of vacancies that we're trying to fill. And last but not least, we've had an edeval committee meeting. They meet fairly regularly during the course of the year. One of the things that we're, we're discussing as a group is just the, the model in and of itself, because it was more or less handed to school districts across the state four, five years ago, and now it's, it's a great opportunity for us to look and see what's working for us, what's not, how can we, how can we improve on it? So I've been part of that committee that's meeting. We invited some of the other administrators in this, this past week to continue that conversation, and, and one of the things that came out of that conversation is the notion of looking at the language in the bargaining unit contract as it pertains to edeval, and also looking at some additional training, professional development for administrators who were, who are actually implementing the supervision and evaluation model. So great conversation, great group to be, to be working with, so I don't know that it's going to result in changes to what's in our bargaining unit contract this time around, or if it does, it would be, it would be a sidebar agreement once we, once we get to that point, so lots going on.
Any questions for Dr. Blake? Thank you. So I would, we're a few minutes late, I'd like to open the public hearing for this FY19 school budget.
Second? Do we second this, or should we just open it? It's just open?
I think we have to leave it open.
For a period of time, correct?
So.
We usually would open it very correctly, take, if you would take public comments.
Right.
Comments from the committee and then close it.
Okay, okay, so if there are any comments from the audience?
Are there, are there any legal stipulations in them? I apologize for not knowing this.
No.
Where I come from, it's, it's at least 10 minutes that you've got to leave it open.
Okay, all right.
I mean, because if someone, if no one showed up, you wouldn't sit here for 10 minutes necessarily and, you know.
In New Hampshire, we'd sit back and we would wait.
But you can't do it earlier than the time, I think.
That's correct.
Okay, I think it's just a time, so we couldn't open it earlier.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure that we're covered legally. We would wait, yes.
So are there any questions or comments from the committee?
I have one. I just, I'm just curious, from the presentations that we had, have there been any changes? I mean, we ask questions during the presentations, have there been any changes in the budget that we, we need to be aware of?
Yes. Since we had our presentations to you, the health insurance number came in much lower than what we had budgeted at.
Your excellence.
Yes, so there will be a substantial savings in health insurance, and that's a wonderful savings for us as it will afford us a chance to perhaps not use stabilization funds as we go forward. And we are also thinking at the Budget Subcommittee level, we were talking about some of the other things that we might be able to use those funds for, including some security upgrades that we will need to address. And since the budget was put together, there has also been some staff movement in the schools that we'll have to address.
Staff movement, exactly what do you mean?
More expense?
Yes, yes, we've hired a new person at the Doian School.
Okay, all right. What's the difference, what's the delta for the health insurance?
The health insurance savings, I just got the numbers today, and I have to look at it, but it looks around $200,000. Another thing that the school committee needs to consider since our presentation is I have heard that the selectmen have voted as part of their budget to assess the school department a portion of the cost for trash removal, and they have set that number at $19,500, and that also will be addressed by the savings that we have experienced in health insurance.
What's the town share of that, do we know?
I have no idea. Again, just this week, I received a proposal from the town finance director, which indicated that the school department's total cost is $39,000. I've done some inquiry to see whether or not those numbers are actual and how well that they've been developed, and I'm still in conversations with our principals to understand exactly what our trash removal, the amounts are, and the frequency of visits of the trash trucks, to make sure that that number is a good calculation. I did happen to notice that the number is based on a 12-month pickup cycle, and of course, we don't have as much trash in July and August, so we have to look a little deeper to make sure that that assessment is indeed a fair one.
Joanne, should we get an RFP to assess the cost of a private person picking our trash up as opposed to using the town service?
That's something that we could consider. It would take some time to do that because you have to post in the goods and services, and it would take time for us to develop an RFP to understand what all our trash needs are and how much it was. I'm not sure that we could get it done in time for bean counting or town meeting. And also, is this something that the school committee even wants to consider as taking on that cost from now on? I mean, the minute we go into doing an RFP and find a course, a cost, in my mind, that would lead one to think that we are willing to absorb that cost. And while it's something we could be doing now, because thanks to the override, we do have some, I don't want to use the word cushion, but we may have an opportunity to cover that cost, you know as well as I do that when that stabilization fund runs out and we hit the funding cliff, we are not going to have $30,000 or $40,000 to pick up our trash. So while can we do it? Yes, we could, but should we do it? That's another discussion.
Sarah, could you ask the town manager to come present to us their plan for charging us for trash?
Is that healthcare savings just for the next year?
Yes.
It's just, it's by, we negotiate, or we hear what rate is each year?
Each year, we take, during the early stages of budget season, we take our enrollment of current employees who are enrolled in the health insurance, and also our costs associated with the retirees, and we are giving an early number by Maya, our health insurance company, on what we can expect for an increase on each plan. This year, they told us at the outset that we should plan for about a 9% increase, and then it came in much lower at 4.47. So when you're doing the math on almost $3 million's worth of health insurance costs, every point is quite a significant savings. So that's why it was adjusted down.
Joanne, do you know, I don't think we've talked about this yet, but given the change in health insurance costs and given the usual work that happens at the end of the budget cycle, is there any chance that we would be looking rather than to throw out of stabilization to contribute to stabilization this town meeting?
This town meeting for FY18 funds?
Yeah.
I did put on the town meeting warrant. A placeholder. At this point, I'm not ready to come to you with a figure on what we might be able to move. I do think we may have some small savings in health insurance this year. We may also have some small savings in our Essex County retirement assessment. I think that's going to come in lower, but you also have to remember that the board voted $250,000 for the stabilization, not the stabilization fund, I'm sorry, $250,000 to fund this feasibility study. So we're going to have to look and see if we have funds reserved for that and still have monies to move.
Do you have a sense of when you might know, or is this a topic you want to talk to the City Budget Subcommittee about?
I had hoped to talk to the Budget Subcommittee at our next meeting because soon I'll have to give that figure to the town manager, and at the same time, we're going to have to consider whether or not we want to move any funds into the Special Education Stabilization Fund. Madam Chair, I would ask that the school committee take a vote to approve the FY19 budget proposal of the superintendent. It consists of a budget of $29,790,000. It consists of a budget of $29,795,316, with an outside debt amount of $2,533,775, for a grand total for school budget FY19, $32,329,091.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. So, I'm going to close the public hearing on this FY19 school budget at 7:46.
My public hearing's only just started.
Okay. The school choice discussion. So we began the school choice discussion at our last meeting, which seems like a long time ago, although we've met in between, just not alone. So I thought we would begin, so we have Laura gathered a lot of information for us in the choice folder attached to tonight's folder, that I know you all have. So I thought we could begin the conversation kind of broadly, with a broad discussion of choice. I know that choice is maybe a newer conversation for Pab and Nicole, and I know it is for Brian. And I know we have senior members who've been discussing choice for a long time, and there's a lot of different views on choice. So I thought we'd kind of start, kind of with the broad discussion about choice. And then I know the administrative team is really looking for guidance from the school committee for both this year and moving forward.
When is our deadline?
Well, every year you have to decide by May 1st. A district has to decide whether or not to participate in choice. And then internally, we would decide, if we were to participate, how many spots we would want to open at each grade level.
So May 1st is just a yea or nay?
Yes. And typically Ipswich has, as a school committee has historically, to participate at some level in choice. It has fluctuated, even with my term on the school committee. So that's kind of where we are.
So, at the end of this discussion, where do you hope that we are?
Well, I hope, Brian and the administrative team hopes that we can really give them the direction of generally where choice will definitely be moving for this year, but also in general. But there was some discussion at our last school committee meeting about potentially digging into more of the enrollment issue this, potentially this summer, where they're working group, and that might drive a little bit of the choice discussion as well.
I thought Carl had also really pushed for, like, our philosophy around, like, what is the goal of choice?
Well, that's what I meant. He was specifically enrollment.
My question goes about, I'm a broken record on this. We have not made and taken any kind of position on the enrollment trends we've been experiencing for years and years. And we're going to continue to experience them. Projections say we'll drop another 200 kids over the next seven years. So that's, I think we should react to that. And I would have a hard time making an intelligent decision or recommendation on choice if I don't understand what our overall goals are. So my suggestion was, when we get clear of the building, let's build a project, and the decision on that, let's study the enrollment and take a position on what level of enrollment we're trying to maintain, or whether we're comfortable letting enrollment decline to wherever it falls, and then we can figure out what role choice plays in all that.
Carl and I had kids graduating the class of 165, maybe six or seven years ago. My daughter will graduate with 104 kids this year.
My daughter was one of, was the 185 class. So, yeah, so that was the idea, that was my suggestion. But I know we'll make decisions for this year, because we won't have time to do that study between now and the decision date.
But part of, if I understand the way it's worked correctly, your daughter with the class of 185 probably had, if I understand it correctly, had a significant number of choice students in that graduating class?
No. There may have been other classes.
Last year?
Yes, last probably had 15 or 20. Yeah, most kids had 15, 16.
So, and the reason that I'm concerned about it, along with the, it ties directly into the enrollment, is that it's also tied to the budget. You know, there's a dollar figure that's associated with that. And so, in the years when we had a lot of choice students, they were spread out amongst all of the grades. A lot of those kids are graduated, and we're not backfilling that. So we're watching, we're watching a declining enrollment overall, but we're also watching a declining.
Choice numbers.
Choice.
11 or 15 kids graduate every year who are choice kids, and we don't backfill them.
So that revenue stream is going away as well. And so, because that's part of our budgeting on an annual basis, what we're doing with the choice funds, we've got to be concerned about that. And that's going to alter how we do our budgeting going forward. If the end game tonight is that, no, we're not going to do choice anymore, we want to right-size for the next couple of years, then okay, then I know that we have X number of dollars today that isn't going to be there three years from now, because it's going to be getting, it'll be used up in the budgeting process. That's all.
Do we have a number for the administration in terms of at the high school or the middle school level, in order to support and deliver a particular educational program? So for example, how many AP classes do we want to run? How many do we want to maintain the middle school teams? Like, is there?
I couldn't give you that tonight. And I think that with the declining enrollment, would have to be decision points along the way, to see what you wanted to keep, and what you wanted to do away with, or find another way to fund.
It's tough to predict that around choice anyway, because you don't know caliber of student that you're going to get. For example, AP, you couldn't really determine needed AP classes based on the number of choice students coming in. Because, you know, they could be all over the place, in terms of where they're placed.
But isn't that the same for your regular?
I'll give you an example. We have about the same number, we have, I think, the same number of teachers at high school now. In 2014, we had 568 students, that's in the report. And now we have 485 students at the high school. So we're down 80 kids, same number of teachers. So it depends on what the number of kids in the class is, really. And we're not teaching some things we used to teach, and we're teaching a few more, I guess, but.
Right.
I guess part of the conversation too, is the program. What, you know, we talked about, the conversation about right-sizing, it's becoming small on its own, potentially. What, how does that impact? I would love that to be included in that working group. How does it impact programming? Because it has been small before. It was really small when I attended it, many moons ago. And we did offer some, you know, impressive AP classes, higher level things. They presented them in a different way. We had more multi-level classes. We had classes that might have two or three AP kids for French, a couple of honors kids, a couple, and then we would break up, we would break up for specific components of the class. So I guess the question is, if we were to choose not, you know, as we study enrollment, I think I'm most interested in how that impacts programming and the education. And do our, how are other small districts delivering high caliber education, and serving all of their kids across the spectrum, you know, effectively? Because we're not the only district who's growing smaller.
I think that's a real issue, too, is that it's not like we're getting smaller, there are other schools around us, other towns that have populations that aren't shrinking, everybody's shrinking, so we're pulling from a smaller pool.
That's a good, right. That's a good point, too. So the availability might, for choice, might be less.
And that's not even the impact we're feeling now.
Could you say?
Since the recession, the decline in births was about 15% statewide.
And I just don't, I mean, we're not, I don't think we're in a position to answer Brian's question you're asking, because we don't have the information. So if we were, if you were, I would be interested in knowing, what does a district of 1,500 kids look like? What does that mean in terms of educational offerings and quality? I don't know how to answer that without some more information.
And staff size.
Is that a good thing or a bad thing?
Right.
What information do you need that we don't provide?
Staff size?
Our NASDAQ report, we have all of our staff numbers, we have all of our statistics, we know where we're going.
We have no information on, if we were to, if, we know that, for example, the predictions on enrollment say they will drop to whatever, 15 some, 15 hundred some odd kids. What does that look like in terms of education delivery? How many classes, how many sections, what kinds of offerings?
What would be cut if we went small?
Would anything be cut?
Or anything?
I have no idea.
Because we've been small before. And how, you know, I was in it, so I, you know, I was evaluating it.
You have fewer sections.
Magic AP classes, but we didn't offer as many, or they didn't.
And the reality is that the demand has not been great in recent years either. We have voted slots that we haven't filled. One year we voted them too late. We voted them late.
We voted them late a lot.
No, one year we did.
Middle school, all the middle school slots, it was late.
Yeah, the big year, we offered 26 spots or something, was late, right? That was the late year.
So is there a service that choice serves for faculty? Do we have to open choice slots for professional status faculty members?
Don't confuse choice and our policy decision to accept faculty member students. As policy, faculty members petition to bring their children to the district.
And that's not choice?
And that's not choice.
Correct, that's not.
We can open a choice slot and take a child who's already in district, in choice from another district, and then we could actually get $5,000 from their sending community. But the idea of choice, don't conflate it with the, our policy towards education.
So is there, so what other, who would, I guess, I just need a little bit more information of who would be applying for choice then?
People from other communities who want the kids to leave that.
Who want to transport their students to Ipswich for education. And once they've been approved, they are student from that, moving forward.
And so if we close choice, for example, and we have some choice students are here, is there a policy that siblings of choice students get?
Yep.
That's part of policy, so that we wouldn't have to open choice for that?
That's the law, that's not.
Siblings, can siblings get first peck? There's no lottery for siblings if there's a choice lot open.
If there's a choice lot open.
If we don't open a slot for that kid, they'll come.
So what I'm saying is, if we decide tonight to not have choice, and we have some students who are already in our district, and they have siblings, that means they can't come, correct? Okay. And that was the risk that parents took when?
So I've been a proponent of right-sizing for a long time, but I continue to hear my esteemed colleague to my left talk about the great influences the choice kids bring to the district. I see our middle school model has, I can't add that quick, but 60 kids? 60 kids that they want to open up?
71.
Thank you. 71, thank you, sir. There's always the hybrid, you know, and it also, if we left some choice slots open for the middle school especially, that would enable some siblings to fill, too. So we don't, you know, just cut it off, you know, chop it right away.
As a parent, would you enter a district, wouldn't you more likely enter a district in the elementary, rather than entering in the middle school? I mean, if we're diminishing populations, are we going to?
Well, there's five and three, none at Doian, but I just see that large amount of slots that they would like if we kept the full middle school model.
Yeah, my question is, you know, if we open choice spots, and we're hoping for those choice spots, it seems to me that our best bet would be for elementary. As a parent, I would want to get my kids in a school at the beginning, not in the middle.
Right.
So if we're counting on those choice spots, I feel like middle school or high school is a less likely transition point.
Sixth grade was our biggest point.
Well, yeah.
And ninth grade was our second.
K 6 and 9 have always been.
So it's equal?
K 6 and 9.
May I speak historically to that? When we were at the peak of opening slots at the middle school level, they were filled. True, the building was new, but I don't think that your idea that opening at the elementary would necessarily bring a bigger population to the district.
Of acceptance rates at the elementary.
No. But that, but also historically, when choice came to be, it was, there was a push to get students in at the kindergarten, sixth grade and ninth grade level, because those are the transition points. That's where you saw your best numbers.
And we've seen a significant number of applicants, at all, most, all the way up to 11th grade at high school. So late in their.
Yeah, and we get some.
We've had quite a few.
Those can be kids with social, emotional challenges.
Well, that's the other thing.
Graduation issues, or those kind of things.
Well, yes. So it seems to me that at the elementary age, you would have a better chance of getting kids who have not had a hard time somewhere else. You know, if they're going in, it's, I don't know, I would like to see that information.
If you read through the NASDAQ report, it's very clear. The kids who came here are equally or more successful academically.
Overall?
Equally or more successful extracurricular, equally or more successful in terms of socioeconomic background. So I think you could look at them as a distribution, but there are certainly plenty of people who select to come here for the high-quality program that we have, whether it's in music, or athletics, or academics. And they move from all communities around us, a big number from Raleigh, but you see them from all over the place. It's amazing.
We saw our major inflex though, when this building went online. Many of the students that we had lost suddenly came back, and others from other, they brought others from other districts with them. We'd probably anticipate the same thing if, when the new elementary school is built.
So I'll get back to the middle school. It's either all or nothing, it looks like, in the middle school recommendations. And that just doesn't, that just doesn't sound right. And it also gives us the problem of having to open up choice slots on a.
Forever.
You guys have known all along, I said, the middle school model, more than financial issues, created the choice dilemma, that we opened up choice to fill, to preserve the middle school model. And when we saw that it filled the high school more than we wanted, and we were cutting educators at the high school because we had to financially, it was, it drew all the concerns. So the driver has always been a middle school model.
So I don't see why it goes from 31 to 0. Isn't there a number in between? What would those do to our, what would those do to our enrollment numbers at each of those grades for next year?
Moving from 160 to 165.
Yeah, I mean, you're at.
Which is the middle school number.
Yeah, the grade 8 class right now is big, but 6 and 7 are 136, 133, so 160, 150. But then they migrate to the high school, which right now, those high school grades are in the 120s and 30s.
Right, right.
We see, from middle school, high school, we see a 20, 25, or about, yeah, we'll do some kids at that.
But I think, Chubb, the numbers would have to be big enough to support another staff person. I think that's where those numbers are coming from.
I know that.
I have the same question, Chubb.
I know that.
It's a little confusing, or at least requires some more discussion. I mean, predominantly, this conversation is about the middle school, right? Because that's where choice numbers have most impacted our district.
We've never intentionally brought in choice kids in elementary school that would change the number of sections we offered. It's always been the number of sections we had available, if you can.
And class size, yeah, class size.
So elementary is easy, right? High school's diffuse, because high school, you kind of add sections or subtract sections, you have widely varying class sizes. It's only the middle school that matters.
So it seems like it's maybe predominantly discussion around the happening in middle school, so-called middle school model. Is that something you want to maintain or not? Or Chubb's question, is there something in between, sort of the all or nothing alternative that's kind of presented here in the recommendations?
See, it's always been a bigger issue than that for me. I mean, it's, my concerns with choice go beyond the middle school. It's just the concept itself.
The philosophy behind it.
It's not even so much philosophy as it is just the reality of, I've had, you know, what resonates in my mind is all, you know, going back two superintendents ago, about one of the goals was trying to decrease our dependence on outside funding. And this, part of the reason that we find ourselves, and see, to me, when it comes to this, the glass is half-empty, because our dependence on choice has, again, given us a false sense of where we're really, where we are, where we're at. And I would like to right-size our own enrollment for us before we start looking elsewhere. I'd like to be able to get a real grasp on where we're at as a school district with our Ipswich kids. No reflection on the kids that have come in via choice, because they've been terrific additions to the.
additions to the district. It's just that, for as long as I've been here, we've never really had that conversation, to Carl's point, about, you know, let's look within first before we start looking out and get a real, better understanding as to where we're going to be in five years, 10 years, 15 years.
I think we're already there. I mean, we only have.
I don't think so.
We, so, so right now, it's 11 in 12th grade and 14 in 11th grade, but it's 3, 5, 4, 3, 1, 4, none, 1, none, 2. I mean, we have very few choice kids in the district right now. A smattering.
We have eight kids in middle school, and we're, we're saying, yeah, let's open it up to 71. What makes you think we're going to get?
Not going to get that.
Yeah.
We've, we've gotten it in the past.
When you go from eight to 71?
We did. One year, we just said, we're opening the doors, and we got, we opened for 20 in each grade.
But I guess the hard part is, so let's say, you know, if you do that, and we say, okay, let's open all the, you know, hypothetically, if we open all of those slots, we have to plan for that in our budget, because we would have to add staff, and then we don't fill them. We don't fill them. And then what happens?
Right, well, we were in the situation.
We're in this cycle of.
So the reason we did it was to preserve the kids' school model. We had it, we saw the kids going down, so we said, let's do this. And this is how we'll incentivize it, which is split the money with the educators, with the principals. And they said, okay, that would be great. And they filled it up. So we're seeing right now what no choice looks like. This is it, right now.
Okay, but it begs that discussion that we have to have, those tough decisions.
So we have to cut, we have to change our middle school model.
When I said to you last, at the last meeting, and with all due respect, you've been, you've been the one that's been most outspoken about having those difficult discussions about reducing staff and, you know.
Absolutely.
But at the same, same, in the same breath, you want to keep adding students, which just, in my opinion, delays that decision that much longer. That's, I just think we're riding a sort of a false, a false number is what, what it amounts to for me. And I just, I am tired of relying on, you know, we're seeing our grants drying up, this here.
Why don't we think about choice philosophically? If you like having kids come in, forget about the money. The money's not important. Because really, the money's not important. The money's less than 1% of our budget right now. It's unlikely to go up to any significant portion in any time soon. And we should just discount that as the discussion piece, and just say, philosophically, what do we think of choice kids? Should we introduce them, should we introduce them to the district, a bigger number or not? Because, I mean, tying in decisions to downsize, I agree, are tricky, because then you're, you're deciding that you have to recruit 20 choice kids every year at sixth grade. That's pretty much the way to make it work. And if you can't do that dependently, or if you don't think you can do that dependently, then you have to change your middle school model. And then just take a smattering of choice kids. Open choice to slots you need, take siblings, add a few slots here and there where you think class sizes can use it, and just do it in a piecemeal fashion like we've been doing it. And that, that policy, that, that idea would at least give kids who are eager to be here the opportunity when we have the slots.
And it also, actually, when you, when you think of it this way, since there's only eight in the middle school and they're asking for 71, then why aren't we tailoring that to more towards eight versus more towards 71, opening 10 in middle school or 12 in middle school?
No, because they're going to change their model. What we're going to tell the middle school is, okay, now you're going to have to, you cut two educators in eighth grade this year, you may have to cut two more next year and two more the year after that, as you downsize your model. And that's what we have to do.
Yep.
At every level, just like at the elementary school, we've gone to three sections in every grade. We used to have four, in most grades.
I understand that. But you also show the taxpayers that you're adjusting to the population.
We were in, we were in reactionary mode, because we were cutting people one year and adding them back the next, as these numbers played through, which, to me, is no way to operate. You know, we were making decisions to cut two sections in the middle school, and then all of a sudden, Fong were adding those two sections back, and it was, we were living in the moment is what we were doing. And I don't think, I think those days are long gone.
When you review the NESCA report, what they said, which was very different than anything we'd ever proposed, was open 10 slots in every grade with every new class and just see what comes. That's kind of the steady state model that, okay, we'll just add some for money and for diversity purposes, or whatever it might be. That unfortunately has the, has the effect of amplifying our worst classes of overcrowdedness and, and not supporting the ones that are the best classes for size. So I think what we should probably do, if we're not going to change the middle school model, is just do what we've been doing. Open it for choice writ large, and look at, look at places where you can add a few kids in sections at elementary, and maybe it transitions like sixth grade and ninth grade and leave it at that. Then you preserve some of the good parts of choice, which brings in kids who really want to be here, and for one reason or another.
Siblings.
Siblings. We listen to parents who want to bring siblings in and teachers who want to bring their kids in, because we want to keep that openness to families and community. And you can, you know, let the school shrink to where it's supposed to be. But what we haven't done, and shame on us, is we haven't seen attrition in educator numbers or numbers. And that's because our, our model, our co-teaching model, that's because, you know, in some ways we're preserving jobs that somehow we have to look at reorganizing around the elementary, the middle school model. I don't know.
I mean, just to be clear, we talked about before, but philosophically, for me, when it comes to choice, I like the idea.
I love it.
I like the program I want to support, because I really like the idea of studying four athletes, proving these kids that come here are motivated and they add a lot of value to the town. And it also said to us that we don't, the cost addition to the schools, to these kids is negligible. They are not a net negative financial impact on the district. So therefore, that tells me we can, at some level, continue to add or have choice kids in the district, both as positive contributors and with a net financial benefit to the schools.
And it raised the bar in music, it raised the bar in athletics, it raised the bar in athletics, it helped academics, it helped everybody.
Right. I just wonder at what level we can maintain it. And again, it seems to me predominantly, our question is, it seems to me we could reasonably do what you're suggesting, that we could strategically add, as we've done over the years, choice kids at the elementary and the high school level, maybe at the middle school level.
Six and nine.
Maintain some lesser number than our, than our peaks, but some number of choice kids has a good financial benefit to us and other benefits. That would be fine.
What's the number?
Whether we should try to boost those numbers.
No, no, no. This is how I verbalize the number. We will add choice kids where possible, so as not to affect our model. And our model at the elementary school would be the number of sections we can accommodate based on our native population. And our model at the middle school is based on what our new middle school model is going to be, with the number of educators we have, and what we think the ideal number of kids in those sections is. If that means our ideal, ideal class size is 130 now at the middle, at the middle school instead of 160, that means a different middle school model than what we had before, and it's fewer educators. If that means that we have three sections in each grade in the two elementary schools or six sections in our new building, then that's what we'll target. And at the high school, it's still going to be diffuse. It's still going to be up to sections and the principal, because the high school is the hardest to quantify. The old, the middle and elementary should be easy. And I think if that's our overriding philosophy, that we add based on native population, so as not to add educators, then that means you don't add cost, but for incremental cost. And, and you maintain the diversity of the student population. And just so you know, I'd open as many, 100 slots in every grade.
You know that, we know, we know.
And then where we want to come will be great, and we just put staff to it.
So there you have it.
And that won't be the last time you hear him say that either.
And he's actually gone down, he's gone down 15 in each grade, so he's.
And hopefully, football team gets a little.
You had me there, Chubb. You had me until open the floodgates.
I would do that myself. I know I don't want to.
So do, is there any further discussion on this?
Do we need to make a decision right now on how many and if we'll continue?
The earlier the better.
We could take a vote tonight for, to participate, or not for the May 1st, if we chose to. I have been told that people are already calling the district.
How many? What?
Heidi says several. My notes say several.
Several means, several means three, four.
It was three this week.
Three this week.
Really? For, for next year or for now?
But we, we accept applications at any point. Don't make an official determination on whether participating until May the 1st.
Correct.
Yeah, but it'd be nice to know how many.
We're accepting applications, right?
We could.
And continue to do that and see what we get.
Well, we could take a vote now, or we can wait till earlier, prior to May 1st and take a.
I moved to accept choice for the year 2018 to 2019.
Second.
Any further discussion?
So what we are voting on is just, it's not an upper limit.
Right, just to participate.
Participation, okay. And we, we could internally then decide on numbers if.
We can adjust numbers going forward too.
Okay.
We can participate in choice and open no seats.
Which we've done, which we've done.
I think it also, if we do vote to participate, I think it, since we have recommendations from the administrators already, I think it, not that I want them coming out another night, but I think we need to have them come in and justify or explain exactly what their plan is.
The recommendations are easy.
To your, no, no, I know that. It's right there. But I want to know, for example, 71 requested slots in the middle school, I want to know why and how.
But we don't need elementary or high school, it seems like we just need.
Right now, they, they, 71, if you add back the two educators. Yeah, we're not doing that.
Whatever, whatever. I'm voting no, so it doesn't matter.
So how many, how many students per educator? Excuse me for being so, so is there a specific ratio?
Yeah, we determined all those years ago. We said 18 in the kindergarten, we were going to go up to 20. I think 18 or 20 was our goal for.
I'm thinking middle school.
K to three. From three to five, we looked at 24. And then middle school, our target was 24 per section.
So there's 48 students.
I thought that was a little bit low, but.
It's policy.
It's in policy. No, but it's in target numbers. I think the target, twice originally, that's what we targeted to, we said we'd have this number.
So, so on our current model, with, because we're not fully staffed right now, we could take 23 middle school choice students.
I would definitely not recommend we vote numbers tonight.
I know that, I'm just philosophically talking about this.
But you're talking about.
Right now, the only number is open to us, there's nothing at the high school, there's nothing at the middle school, there's nothing at Doian School. So you only have, you know, two grades where you're, where you have a proposal to open slots. So I'm not arguing that right now, I'm saying I want to hope the choice writ large.
Well, that's not true. The high school said can't determine.
Right.
Middle school said.
71.
Different models.
No, the middle school said if you change your model. We're not, we haven't, we haven't discussed that at all. So if we keep our current numbers, they said zero. Doian said zero, Winthrop said five spots in grade two, three spots in grade four. That's all, that's all we have on the table right now from our administrators, unless we change what we ask for of administrators.
I have to tell you.
So two, 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 two teachers less in middle school. I mean, we, we, we don't take 71 students.
You know what, what's unfortunate is that the people at the middle school have already been notified that they're not going to have jobs next year. And where, here we are. It's like the cat before the horse, but that's, that's another issue.
Okay.
The question on the table is open a choice, is whether.
Yes, thank you, yes. So there's a motion and a second to participate in choice this coming school year. Any other discussion?
We have, we have the ability to vote numbers later, correct?
We do. We don't actually technically have to vote, we can actually internal, internal votes.
We can adjust those any way up and down, we feel.
Yes, we can adjust those as long, as we go. Okay. All those in favor of participating in choice next year? Opposed? Five to two in favor.
Can I ask, Barry, you're clear on your reasons. Sarah, what are your reasons?
Well, philosophically, I, my concern with choice are twofold. And for me, it's not necessarily about number. I feel like the classroom teacher is the resource. When you add two additional students into a classroom and the classroom goes, let's say, from 18 to 20, there are two additional students are taking energy and time from that teacher. Our priority, my priority, sitting on the Ipswich School Committee, is to serve Ipswich students. The idea of putting two extra kids in a classroom to potentially draw down the energy and the resource of our teacher doesn't make sense.
Those kids are worth $120,000.
No, but money aside, if there's openings, I mean, this is.
And they add diversity.
So this is, we have an opening in the, in the classroom, and we had, you know, someone lived in Ipswich and we had a student in that class, then they would have had that number, I mean, we can, it's flexible in terms of opening it. So I think that we're not advocating for choice to overtax our teachers or to extend class sizes. We're, pardon?
What happens.
But adding two extra bodies in a classroom is two extra bodies.
And this, and this is Sarah's reasoning for.
That's right.
Everybody has their own.
Depends on the two bodies, I think. Go ahead.
And I'll tell you, I know.
I don't know if that was the only reason, but you were, you were asked what your reasoning was behind.
And I know we, we talk, we talk numbers, we, I mean, we talk class size all the time, and I know that I'm probably overly sensitive to middle school, but, you know, when we talk 24 students in a middle school class, it worked a whole lot better with 20. And, you know, the fact that our middle school teachers on occasion may have 18 or 20 or 22 students in a class, God bless them. You know, and to Sarah's point too, that not necessarily less is better, but, you know, that's who it falls on. So that's who it falls on.
But I think also, we take, we talk about, what we know from that NESDEC study is that those students perform generally as, as well or better than us. But we also know that they essentially have the same profile as Ipswich does in, in student makeup. So when we say they bring diversity, they don't. They're essentially just more like Ipswich-like students.
Be careful with how you define diversity. Are you talking racial diversity?
No, I'm just talking about the performance measures that they use from the NESDEC side. It says they perform, they participate in, in sports at a similar rate, they perform in fine arts at a similar rate, they perform in, in academically at a comparable rate as, you know, so they have a similar profile academically, as a student profile.
But like private schools or other, or other attraction schools, right? Kids come to participate in outstanding programs.
Absolutely.
And so an outstanding music program will attract kids from all around to build the outstanding music program. I can tell you there are some spectacular musicians in my daughter's classes from out of town.
That's where we should be devoting our energy.
A great basketball program, like our basketball program used to be, attracted great basketball players.
That's where we should be devoting our energy. And I get the fact that people go to private school for a host of different reasons, some because my parents went, my, you know, whatever. We should be looking at the kids that are leaving Ipswich and try to address the reasons why. Because we have kids, we have kids.
Never have a football team like.
We, we have kids.
We're going to lose kids.
We have kids choice not of Ipswich.
I know, yeah.
That's what we should be addressing first.
That's a great point.
So the current Winthrop first grade has 48 kids, 16 in a class. So next year going forward, that grade will have, you know, 16 kids in a class for three classes. Their, their proposal for adding a few slots would bring it potentially to 18 with some slack.
My daughter had 22.
My daughter had 27 in kindergarten.
Yeah.
So, so these kind of things, that's an opportunity in my, in my eyes, that here's a principal in conference with our educators saying, that class is 16. It's nice, but we could do more. And we'd support the district and add more to the community. And so maybe we can add a few people there. And what we see in front of us, the numbers we see at grade two and four are very well supported by the numbers in, in the paperwork here. 52 and 48 kids in those two areas. And what if that goes down to 40 or 35 and you get 12 kids in a class? Nice for those teachers, but it's an opportunity missed on our part.
And I would say there is a lower limit that, that is not great to have as a teacher in a class. There's just not enough diversity of opinion. There's not enough activity and not enough discussion. And as we near those numbers, you know, I.
What's that number to you?
It's in the grade level.
Under 20 to me. 19 is fine, 18 is too small.
So I move to support the Winthrop School recommendations of five additional students at grade two and three additional students at grade four.
I don't know if I can do numbers. What did you say?
It's the numbers in the recommendation.
I thought we weren't going to do numbers.
I was going to recommend it, see what happens.
He made a motion.
Let's see if it sticks.
Someone can have a second if you.
Thanks, Carl.
I do that. So the philosophy is our administrators have made recommendations. The only valid recommendation we have right now is the 48 kid first grade and the 52 kid third grade at Winthrop School. So you're talking 16 and 17 kid grades. And they would leave room for growth of one slot, one degree, and still keep you 18 or below in those classes.
Can I ask you a question? You said, I don't know if I heard you right, I thought I heard you say that, or maybe Sarah, you said this, that the administrative team, which I assume includes the building principals, are looking for direction from the school committee on sort of long-term philosophy on choice.
Yes, that is accurate.
That true across the board? Should we interpret that as favoritism toward choice in the buildings, among the building principals?
No, I think, I think they're genuinely looking to the school committee to make some determinations as to whether or not we're going to continue with our choice program moving forward. Because that's going to have implications for budgeting and staffing potentially as, as we do move forward.
But it doesn't really take a position on choice necessarily.
Do we have any feedback from teachers on choice?
I, I don't. I don't.
You know, that's impact?
I mean, I think you would get.
In the classroom, like, you know, I, I guess my, the way I look at choice is the teacher's the resource. You know, you put a couple extra bodies in the classroom, there's a couple extra bodies taking the energy of a second grade teacher. So I guess, I haven't heard much during my time on the school committee, from feedback from teachers on their perception. We get numbers from administrators. I'm not sure if there are a lot of internal conversations about that that happen at the, at the school level. I'm not aware of that kind of conversation.
I guess that was my relative assumption, the administrator talking to the faculty before making these recommendations. I would assume that, but I don't know.
That was, that was what I asked.
Well, I think you would, if you asked the four principals, you may get members of the administrators on either side of the discussion.
Okay.
For different philosophical reasons.
But I think if you ask the teacher, they teach kids. They don't teach towns or choice kids.
No, I mean, numbers.
They, they would treat every child the same.
Oh, absolutely. I agree. Okay. All right, so is there a second for Hugh's motion?
That's just for the Winthrop?
Winthrop, grade two, which has 18 kids right now, adding five more, and grade four, which has 52 kids right now, adding.
Aren't we going to have to change this anyway? Aren't we, once high school numbers come in?
Yeah, we'll get to consider them again, like opening up slots.
At least opening those slots.
Some parent will have the comfort to know there's slots there.
Okay. I second that.
Any further discussion on the motion for Winthrop spots?
I think it's, it may, it may not make a difference in the end, depending on what we do, but it seems to me just better, there's no rush to specify the number of seats. And I just feel more comfortable kind of making all those decisions at one time. So I'm not necessarily against the recommendations from Winthrop School. I would just rather prefer to do.
The only reason I'm bringing it forward now is it looks like Doian and the middle school are solid already.
Middle school, I would say is not at all solid. We have two radically different portfolios there.
Are we going to change it?
With, with eight, with eight, eight students currently enrolled as choice students at middle school.
Right.
I don't see any chance of getting 71 students to.
I don't either, but who knows? But regardless, it's still a two.
I'd feel, I'd feel better with a number of like 10.
Absolutely. And where are the, what are the costs of the COVID?
What they're saying is, don't lay off the two teachers you're laying off next year, and we can support all these kids because we have enough space in our sections currently. That's what they're telling us. That's a, that's a message.
But if we were to do that.
No, stop.
If we were to do that, and then we don't fill them.
We can lay off the teacher in September.
Okay, way to treat people.
Yeah, no.
I mean, just out of curiosity, but my impression just from my time here is that we've not had anywhere near 70 people applying for choice slots in the middle school.
Back in the day.
In the last few years, in the last few years, the numbers have been lower.
We have not opened sheets.
Look at 11th and 12th grade, there are 14 and 11 kids right there.
Okay.
We have not opened that number.
Those are the choice kids that have run.
But historically, they had 20 kids a year.
Are those the choice kids that have run through?
Yeah, that's the last bits of the choice kids who actually were in the fairly open choice days. So we basically had 20 kids in every sixth grade class come in.
We've been adding just slowly in pockets over the past.
Yeah, it hasn't been a level.
Five years.
So I just wonder if we, even if we did open up 70 slots, I mean, the odds of us getting 40 seems low.
How do you budget that? How do you plan that? That's my concern. Okay, so there's a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion?
Wait, can I, can I, oh, can I ask a question before we vote? One last question. I'm sorry, you're the Robert Rulsky. Can we revisit this later?
Yes, that's what, if we vote against it, we're revisiting it.
Yes, we can revisit it later.
Thank you.
Okay, so all those in favor of the motion? Three against, that's four.
I abstain. Three, three.
Okay, three to three in one.
It fails.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. So we're going to put the policy section G on hold?
Yep.
Do you think we'll have that?
Can I ask a question, though? When are we coming back to the numbers conversation?
In May, I'm sure we'll come back. After town meeting.
Sooner in advance of, or the sooner we do it, probably the better.
I think if you're a parent who's like applied or is calling and it doesn't sound like we're going to make a decision anytime soon, then you go to your next choice. So I don't think it behooves us to wait.
Right. So we're going to ask what the administrator.
And I don't know what's going to change between now and our next conversation. This is what the administrator recommended.
We're going to talk about the middle school and the high school between now and our next conversation and do it all, all at once.
So I can, I can put it on a future agenda? We can ask the administrators to come in and.
Does that make sense, to have the administrators come?
Yep, we can.
I mean, yeah, I think, obviously, the numbers from, from the adult would be helpful. I wouldn't imagine they're going to be radical numbers. I think the biggest discussion would be around the middle school model.
Okay.
The middle school model generally, and then how choice could affect it.
Seems like we're talking about the middle school model at every meeting.
We are, I know.
I'd like to be able to get some definitive information in terms of how we're going to move forward. Right? And I, like I said, I, I just want to reiterate, reiterate the point that it's truly unfortunate that two people have already been notified that they don't have jobs next year, and now we're going to be, based on a school committee vote, they're going to be brought back? Possibly? Yeah, if we support the numbers, they said they can keep the people that they've, that they have.
If we get them.
If we get, well.
If we support any.
It's no, it's no way to do business.
Okay. School building project update. So last week, we had a combined school building, school committee meeting on the 16th, where the cost estimates were presented, and we went through a value engineering process. The school building committee, we brought the budget, the school project budget into alignment.
Sorry, missed it.
It was a really good conversation.
It's tough to have a meeting.
It is, it's hard to have an invitation, yes, absolutely.
I came back from my vacation.
Yeah, actually, Pop returned from.
Well, I couldn't fly back from mine.
Well done, Pop.
Sorry.
Thanks, Pop. I'm just.
I really.
I'm going to go over it in detail because it was a school committee meeting, but it was, I thought it was a really.
I do have one value engineered item that was a surprise to me. The board, the roof board, roofing board you cut out, that was a cover board.
Yes.
That's to hold up a solar system.
No.
No?
No, this was a protective covering they put on the roof to prevent people from stepping through the roof. The accent, the converse was true. If you were planning, the argument was made, if you're planning to someday put panels up, you'd be less likely to need that because you're never going to walk where the panels will be. It's some kind of hardened board they put up.
I just put up a 0.75 megawatt system on a roof. I put a cover board underneath my membrane to hold the solar system, to protect the solar system from going through the insulation on the roof. Now, that's not what we eliminated. There's still that board there. As Mitchell Lowe has told me many times, he never specs a roof without a cover board. So, so it was the walking board to get between the unit, the HVAC.
A protection board, a roof protection.
For the HVAC units.
Well, yes.
To walk to the, for walking towards, to the HVAC. Okay.
They would put it only in spots sometimes where, where you're walking.
Right, to get to the, to service units.
The cost we were carrying was to put it everywhere.
Oh, okay, got it. Understood. So there's still that cover board to hold the solar system up? Okay. That's my only, sorry, I don't mean to get weedy on this.
Great question.
Can I ask a question? Is there any spec in there that talks about steel or aluminum costs?
You can't.
I'm sure in the, in the overall design, there's got to be a dollar figure associated.
Right. I just have the value management log with me that will change, but.
Is there a way we can bring that question forward, or is that a real question to ask?
I don't know, it may be a little premature, but.
Well, don't forget we're pricing something, and that'll be.
No, I understand. I mean, there's more provision for the pricing to happen.
Right, it's a move in design.
You know what the part of, how much is steel and aluminum in a building like this? Do you have any idea how many? Is it 100,000? Is it a million? Is it 5 million?
In a percent, in a percentage basis?
They're in the estimates.
I can't, I can't tell you often.
Yeah.
It's stainless steel and aluminum. So steel goes up 25%, aluminum goes up 10%.
Try to figure it out right now if you want to.
I would have it front of you.
Didn't mean to challenge you on that.
Just wait 20 minutes.
I don't know.
So at the end of the value engineering log, we had a list of things that we reduced from the budget, a list of possibilities that we could do in the future in the event of cost change. Yes.
Was that master budget handed out last, at the last meeting?
Value management, value engineering.
That wasn't handed out.
That was handed out, absolutely. I can get you a copy.
Can you give me a copy?
Yes.
They didn't send us electronic version of that.
Right, I don't think.
No, they didn't.
I don't think they did. But I can make you a big copy.
Or we could just ask for them to send us the electronic copy.
I could do that.
That'd be great.
I thought we grabbed a couple of extra copies of it, but I couldn't tell you where they are today.
Okay.
I'm so sorry to miss that.
Barry, you want to talk something? Did you go to the universal design?
Oh, before, before. It's a class question, though. Can I just ask? I guess you have to comment, but, and maybe it's as much for the, well, it's for the school committee, maybe the school building committee, too, but because it was a good exercise, I guess part of what I was thinking about was, maybe this was going to actually happen, but I'm not sure, that we continue to do some more cost scrutiny around the building. Because there may be, we found out for any number of good reasons, there's all kinds of assumptions made by designers and engineering architects that have real cost impacts. And we tackled, I don't know how many, 30 items. There's hundreds more. There's only some of the stuff here we can get into, but none of us are equipped to understand those estimates. We have a couple people in the school building committee who can understand it. I said this to the chairman of the school building committee, that it would be, I think, useful to try to figure out a way to expose us a little bit more to the cost implications of more of the decisions that are being made about this building. Because maybe there are additional opportunities to bring the cost down further without impacting the educational quality of alternative.
I think you're exactly right. I think going through that list with them was really helpful and the conversation was good, and I think you're exactly right. And I think, you know, some of the designers on the team brought up, you know, Jeff Anderson with his great, you know, always with his great comments about how does this impact a building and how does it impact education? I think you make a great point, Carl. I think you're exactly right.
And we, I just feel like I don't, I mean, you may know some of this, Kevin Murphy understands it, Jeff Anderson understands it, Mitch Lowe understands it. Outside of those individuals, it's hard for me to know if you say, we put up this kind of a partition, or we use this amount of molding, or we do, put up these bookcases, what's the cost implication of that? We just don't know.
Right, and how else can you get to that? How else can you get a bookshelf? Does it have to be millwork? Does it have to be screwed into the wall, built in? Or does it have to be? Right, I agree.
All because the more we can bring the cost down and still deliver the same quality building, it's obviously a fall.
Right. What I would, what I would recommend is, is that the school committee then take the two, well, actually, I think it was the one estimate that, that the numbers were based.
The M and R. The architects.
Yeah, the architects estimator, take those, take that report and go through the 50 odd pages of it and, and look at individual things and see what the costs are associated with them. Because if you remember, I, I asked some questions about things that I had no idea about, and so I brought them up during the meeting. Well, why are we spending $20,000 on bollards? Right, bollards, is that what it was?
Bollards.
I had no idea what a bollard was.
That's to keep the car from going into the front door.
But I had no idea what they, what they were, why, you know, what, that they were called that. But, you know, but that's what, what I did with the Sheila's. We went through that and came up with a series of questions to ask the architects that night. So I would encourage you folks to do the same thing.
I did go through them all, but I didn't flag.
I went forward to you.
Sometimes we may not know, but I guess you flagged the high-cost items and say, are there alternatives to these?
February 16th.
Well, it's funny that you mentioned the bollards because I got a call, I was talking to a journalist in Salem Evening News, and I had my folder, and I said, well, funny that you should talk, we were talking about security, safety, and I said, well, we're having a lot of bollards. And she said, what? And I was telling her, but it was funny. We had a laugh about the bollards.
What color are they?
Yellow.
There are many different colors.
It could be planters, I learned. All right. Barry, will you tell us about the universal design program you attended?
Well, it really wasn't universal design per se. It was, I was invited by Bob, our architect, and Don also happened to be there, but it was the Boston Society of Architects, and they were talking, they made a presentation on sensory integrated design, which was fascinating. And much of what they talked about has already been spoken about at our building committee meetings. And the whole focus was students that have issues that they, they deal with on a daily basis. Question was what, what could potentially set the child off? So they, they talked about things that they've built into, into design, such as textured walls. It was nice to hear that our sort of meandering hallway, the central hallways, and keeping with what these, these children really like, has a calming effect. It's not that real sharp edge. Interesting piece that they talked about, too, is that students that have difficulty with eye contact, what they've done is they'll often take LED lighting and they'll put it into the floor. So that as a child approaches a hallway and for looking for a specific room, it, there's directions in the floor that they can look at and, and see and navigate appropriately instead of having to make eye contact and having to engage someone to, for directions. They talked about pastel colors, stuff that we already know about. But it was interesting because in order, they said that the, the most common trigger for kids that have issues around sensory, sensory integration, sound is number one. Touch and vision, a sort of hand and glove, movement, and then body awareness. And she, the woman that made the presentation, actually, her name was Laura Schressler. She has two children with autism, so she lives this every single day. But she's talked about the, the space around, when you put your arms out, there's, you give yourself an extra foot on each end, you know, extend, that is your, your, your safety space. And talked about how children in cramped hallways, for example, have real difficulty with that because it's, it's so confined. She had a lot of floor plans that they, they showed us. Also, the plantings, the flowers themselves, which I really never. Also, the plantings, the flowers themselves, which I really never gave a whole lot of thought to. But there's certain flowers that bloom at certain times of the day. And these kids know that. And it has a calming effect because there's, it's that consistency piece that they need. Then there's the seasonal, the year round. It was a lot of good stuff. They have sensory rooms off the main lobby for kids that, for example, have difficulty on the bus ride in or have difficulty coming into the building. So, there's, there's a place for them to go right from, right from the start where they can come in, sort of decompress, calm themselves and then be on their way. Yeah, it's called parametric space. Arms extended plus three inches, transition spaces are most problematic for this. Interesting, I found out that the color beige doesn't really register as a color, so. But they talked about sensory modulation room, a sensory integration room, and there's another room that I couldn't even pronounce, so I didn't even bother. Wavy ceilings they talked about. And, you know, it's also good with light, you know, the light coming in through the nat, the natural light coming through the windows. I'd like to look into this term. You might know what it is, Chub. E I F S wall?
E F S, it's insulation. It kind of looks like that sound, that soundboard. Right there, right there.
Yep.
Looks like that.
Okay.
It's for sound.
It's a stuccoed insulation.
Strictly insulation?
Yeah.
Strictly insulation?
No, it's an exterior wall, but they put the insulation on, then they spray it with a stucco. That's E F S.
But they, she said that the takeaways were curves, you know, furniture included, it's got to have curves, colors, transitions. Stay away from checkerboards. A lot of tile.
Especially the flooring.
Yes. Stay away from checkerboards.
Because of the transition black to white or the contrast?
It's just, yeah. It's not, not even so much that, is it? It's the pattern itself that is disruptive. The other thing is signage. They said do not use icons in your signage. Because it's, it's difficult for them to read. Acoustics, we talked, open spaces. For example, you wouldn't want to place an anxious person in the middle of an open room. So, there's all sorts of things that they talk about. It was great. Yeah, so it went from 9:30 to 11:00. I was pleased to be invited and went out for lunch afterwards and had a great day, so.
Barry, there's no easy answer to this, but did they, or did you get any better, I asked the classroom, but did you get any better sense of how, the trick of this project apart is to how to balance the needs of those that, so those students who might like additional stimulation with those who don't.
Right. That was a question I asked because I said, when is too much, too much?
Yeah.
Right? And there is no, there is no perfect solution is what it comes down to and that. And the other question I asked was, if you have a child who's very involved at the kindergarten level, and we hear all the time about spaces being adaptable and flexible, as this child finds his or her way up to the third floor, do we have the ability to then still provide that space that that child needs? Trying to avoid having to bring the child all the way down to the first floor because there's a space there that's been dedicated, you know, with the services and the resources that he or she might need. So, talked a lot about that. The, there is no real answer for that, Carl. There is no, you know, perfect arrangement.
It's mostly an issue in the common space.
Yeah, yeah. The, the common space is the most problematic for these kids is what it amounts to. Because it's, the ones especially that are fairly confined, like hallways where they're bumping up against other kids and stuff, but it was, it was good. It was really, and there was probably five representatives from MSBA there. There were probably 30 people and they're mostly architects, but the woman that we met first, when we went in and made our initial presentation at MSBA was there, she came right over and said hello, which was kind of nice. So, yeah, it was good. It was a good day.
Thank you for going.
Yeah.
It was great.
So, I back at the envelope the steel and aluminum costs.
The what?
You're so.
Thanks.
Through the budget and pulled out all the structural steel costs and duct work. And it's about $5 million worth of steel in the building. And only half million, $600,000 for the aluminum, as far as I can see, although it doesn't count windows and stuff. That's the proposed tariff.
So, we're going to leave out every other column?
No, no. The idea is, you know, if, if steel goes up 25 percent, you're talking, how are increasing the cost? Back of the envelope, but still, real, potentially. You don't know if it's going to go up 25 percent or change that picture. So, you can see where our costs are hard to control.
Okay, sure. So, the last, one of the other things I'd like to talk about under this topic is, we've been talking about some of the solutions and answers that we need to come up with prior to town meeting to be able to answer a lot of the questions that we're hearing tonight. We heard them from Carl and we've been hearing them about kind of giving the, the community some answers around some potential solutions about organization of the building. Like we talked about the houses or academies, which would include administration of the building, also some transportation. So, those were kind of the three big areas that I was thinking. There are probably others about maybe creating some small workshops with faculty administrators just to kind of maybe go and view some elementary schools of this size so we can see, you know, what's best practice, what's working for them.
Sounds great.
What might they change with how things are going so that we could at least show some potential, firmer solutions than we have shown in the past.
I've also heard a number of times EDP, like the size of EDP. I can't tell you how many parents have come up to me in the library or the grocery store or just like where I can overhear conversations that the day when EDP is combined, pickup is so disastrous. We heard at that community meeting a question regarding like what is the, like the logistics of like through lunchtime and dismissal and I think coming into the building, like what the experience will be like for students first. And I think if we can paint a picture that that is a welcoming experience for small children.
Organized.
Organized and that we're working on that plan and that plan has been executed and is executed in other places. And this is, I think, actually seeing that would be, yeah, in action would be really good. Yeah.
So, are there members who are interested in working on specific?
I think that the tour, the tour would be of another school and with administrators from, from that school would be phenomenally helpful for anyone who could go.
And I know that some teachers have already gone out to some schools in the past to, to ask some of these same, or in similar questions.
But the same size school.
Right.
You know, the tours that we went on in the beginning of the project were fabulous.
And as we're on the topic of tours, someone raised a point to me that some of the people in this community who haven't been in the schools in a long time, who perhaps went to those schools years and years ago or sent kids to the schools years and years ago, I don't think the pictures that we see really do this, the infrastructure, the dire need. I'm wondering if we can open the schools to have, you know, on a vacation or.
I've been asking for that since the first day.
I thought you were going to disagree with me.
No, no.
Do some tours.
The tours, the tours are incredible for that reason.
Yeah, I mean, just being the one to look at Doian before the school, the school year, I mean, to really see that that one building space is being used for blind students, storage, a kiln and faculty library and impromptu meetings. I mean, it's outrageous.
I'd ask the principals to do some of that work with parents. They're also going to be doing some forums on their own. Forums on their own at the building level and inviting parents in to talk about the new building and they're spearheading those.
Or other, but not beyond parents. I mean, I think, I really think we need to motivate the community who does not have school age children, who is older.
Maybe we could lead some tours.
The other thing that, the other thing, and I know it's difficult to coordinate, but an empty building is far different from an occupied building. And if you can arrange tours in small numbers while, while it's in session, seeing children literally on the floor or sitting in the hallway and climbing over each other to get to the desks and things, far more impressive than.
Or while there's a bucket with water collecting from the, in the library from the roof. Well, while kids are moving around them.
And the Tupperware top that plugs the hole in the girls' bathroom at the Winthrop school.
But in the same, in the same token, a tour of a larger school is equally invaluable with people.
Absolutely. But it just, what part of the, part of the task that we have been charged with is showing the need. And there's no better way. I don't care how many pictures you show, right?
I understand. It's just hard to get people out.
I know.
Maybe what I can do is find out from the school committee who might be available, have some flexibility during the day, and then I can reach out to the principals to see if any of those times, you know, I have some flexibility during the week, he might have a little time off. And we could do some tours.
That's good.
See if that works.
You just have to advertise them hard.
Yeah.
Or with purpose.
Or go to like council on aging and say, these are, you know, instead of.
I actually have a, an appointment to talk with the council on aging here in March.
Yeah, maybe they can meet you there.
Well, no, I'm going to go have lunch with them and do a presentation, but I can certainly invite them.
Lunch at the cafeteria.
With the kids?
They would love that too, by the way. They would love that if that's allowed.
Take the bus.
Kids would love it too. That's what I mean.
Yeah, have them take the bus.
Really great.
My aunt takes advantage of the council. Sure. She's 96 today.
Wow.
I'll bring my dad.
So, if anyone has some available times, shoot me an email with your times and I'll reach out to the principals and we can maybe organize some tours.
Yep.
Do we have a, maybe, do you have a, do we have a kind of definitive list of these? You mentioned some, Sarah. These areas of study or clarification we'd like to develop by town meeting if possible?
The three or four were my list.
Transportation.
Transportation.
Organization.
You call it organization.
Or grade configuration. I was calling it.
It's configuration and that should include administrators.
Organization and staffing.
Organization and administration.
Right? At all levels, staffing at all levels. Okay. Yeah. Transportation and sort of some of Nicole's point, it should be the most inclusive look at transportation you can, right? Not just buses, but drop off and all considerations.
Yep. EDP, I think, is something that we need to have a conversation with, with Wilmer about.
Yeah, I don't know if it needs a whole, there just needs to be some kind of plan.
And I think that, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a valid question. You know, we have 100 kids in each of our EDP programs right now. What happens when?
It's 200?
When we're in one building and it's 200 kids after school.
And you're trying to pick up your kid in a timely way.
How do we, you know, that's something that we're going to have to consider as, as a, as a community.
The good news is it's much more space.
It plays to Chub's tours, visiting other facilities of similar size, because I'm sure they've got before and after school programs going as well.
I want to first start at the administrative level and see, you know, principal, assistant principal.
Yep.
How many administrative assistants?
Well, if it hasn't, probably has been surfaced with the design team. If it hasn't, then we have them to help us figure out. We still have opportunities to maximize transportation routes or entrances and exits and, you know, traffic flows through the building.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
So.
What else did we have? There were.
You got a third, I think, Sarah.
Well, I called it organization and then I called it administration. And then we talked earlier about maybe combining that into one. We could break that out. I think of organization of, of grade configuration.
Houses and academies.
Houses versus academies. And then that will trickle down to a conversation about staff. You know, so it's all connected. They're connected, I think.
Yeah, we'll cover everything.
But I really think our educators and our administrators should have a big input on that.
Oh, absolutely. And that's, and they've already started a lot of that work. I mean, this is a similar conversation that was started by our faculty months ago.
We have the insight to make recommendations.
No.
We really have to take it from there.
Absolutely. And they have done some of this legwork already, this foundational work on, particularly on the academies versus, or houses.
I think we should do something on, there's maybe a couple of categories that we group together. Some of this, I think, comes out of information we already have from the school building committee that would be, maybe I'll combine them all together. Operations, operational costs, operations, maintenance and capital. So, one of the questions that may come up is, was raised with this building, what's going to be the ongoing investment to keep that building running effectively?
The new building.
The new building. And so, I think we ought to have some sense of, some way to answer that question as definitively as we can. We have already some indication that operationally our costs won't rise, but they're not necessarily going to fall, at least in terms of our energy costs.
They are going to fall.
They will fall.
Sorry. Energy costs, they fall, but our electric costs are going to go up.
Right.
So, it's going to be a wash. Utility costs overall, I think.
A wash?
Help for two buildings versus.
That's what they've told us so far.
We didn't weigh in propane at that point.
But again, maybe that's why we need to look at it a little harder and just have an answer on that. You know, so utility costs.
SBC might be able to help.
Now, on the maintenance side, it's a bigger building, does, what, what, what impact does that have on us? And then there'll be the question about just ongoing capital to keep the building functioning well.
And I would imagine our architect team would be able to give us some of that information.
I think it's something that they're required to produce, but maybe we can tease out, I don't know if they're ready to do that by May. If not, maybe we can tease some of that out so we can have a concise answer to that, that kind of question. And the other thing I was thinking about is Nicole's point was brought up before. I think the whole idea of, and the architects seemed interested in it, of sort of picking a couple of kind of, you know, day in the life, some personas in the building and, and sort of take people through what that experience will be like for, pick a type of student, pick a certain age, pick an EDP student, pick a teacher, I don't know what the, what, which ones we might pick. But sort of talk about what is that, trace through what that experience looks like. How do they navigate the building? How do they get to the service they want? That would be good for people to, would give them a more realistic way to understand how that building is going to function, which is hard for people to do today. It could also give us a way to differentiate what, how that compares to what we have today. Because the building is designed to be much improved from a user experience. And that's one way to demonstrate it. Where you could say, look, if you happen to be, pick a student who gets some, some sort of special service and you happen to be in the Winthrop building today, here's what happens. In the new building, it's going to look like this. And I think there's going to be some really strong distinctions we'd be able to pull out of that.
And how are you going to describe that?
What's that?
How do you describe that?
I don't know.
So, so from my experience and, and my profession, I can tell 30 people and show 30 people plans and go, have them go through the whole things. And I'm blown away how many people don't understand it. But if we took them in a bus to another building and gave, I'm serious about this, on a Saturday morning, even though it's empty.
Well, that could be a way to do it.
Right?
It could be a way to do it.
Or maybe.
Maybe some, some parents who go to Winthrop who don't, who actually are interested in, and question, you know, question it. So, it just blows me away how no one, how few people translate plans. Blows me away.
Well, I mean, there may be some things we could do, I mean, I, I know we have the technology to present some of this. We could do some virtual reality.
Sure, sure, I guess.
That's one way to do it. There may be just some metrics, like travel times.
I don't know.
You know, if you're student X or Y, what's your travel time during the course of your day, or to get from your classroom to your service today versus what it would look like tomorrow? That might mean something to people.
I think you're getting way too involved.
I'm just saying a couple examples, I'm not talking about everybody, I'm just saying, give people a way to experience the building a little bit.
We ran tours when we were doing the renovation at law. I had in the prep lobby, there were five or six people at a time during the school day. We walked them through, we showed them all the special education spaces, we talked at length about how the challenges that certain kids faced, but we didn't get down to the real, okay, if you're this, you know.
But it received well.
It was exceptional. I mean, we had all age groups represented. It was unbelievable, you know?
Did you have your people, did you have an opponent, did you have proponents and opponents there?
Oh, yeah. Because again, it was, it was, it was basically proving the need. And you're talking a, a building project that was a massive renovation in one building and a brand-new elementary school at the same time. They both passed. Because, in, in part, because of the, because of the tours, that people really saw up close and personal what our kids were dealing with.
And where were the tours? In other towns?
What?
In other towns?
Toured them through the schools.
Of your school, oh, the school, the old schools. Okay, I'm sorry.
I think we should do that, but my point was more to Chubbs, which is, so people can understand current conditions. What they struggle with is understanding how that's gonna be different in the new building by looking at a plan. That's all I'm getting at. What does that plan tell them? You're right, they can't understand it. What is that, why is that better? Why is that, that new building you're designing gonna be better for my kid? I think we should give them a better way to understand that.
Okay.
That's all.
Where's the closest, 775 elementary school? Does anyone know?
Georgetown.
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 Newburyport. Sixty-five, that's only K-3.
So there's two.
It's a brand-new building.
Maybe Brian can use his influence.
I have ways.
You have ways.
That was great. Discussion.
When's the next school building committee meeting?
Not until.
Not scheduled?
I don't think we have one scheduled.
I don't think that we have one scheduled until we get a response back from the submission.
Okay.
Yeah.
To review their responses. Okay. Okay, so next we have Dr. Blake with the principal search update.
Yes. So closed today, we have 45 applications. I've, I'm sorry?
That's a lot.
Oh, yeah, that is a lot. That is a lot. And a wide variety. People that are sitting principals from around the state, some out of state, some are assistant principals, some from private schools, some principals from New Hampshire and states further away, some teachers, so it's a, it's a mix of candidates, different levels of education attainment as well. So it should be a good, a good pool for us. I've invited two teachers, Megan Horst, who is a, she's a first-year teacher with us, but has a lot of teaching experience, as well as Andy Sargent. So we have two teachers on the committee. I've asked two parents, one I've heard back from, the other I have not. The one I've heard from is Rachel Rosler. Then we have, I believe it's you Barry and Hugh on for the school committee. And then administrators, thus far I've asked Tom Gallagher, and I'll be asking one other member of my leadership team to, to sit in on those interviews as well. So, hope to screen them and I haven't, I've looked at the list, I haven't looked at the actual applications, and get meetings scheduled for next week we can start. So it's gonna take a while to get to 45 applications now. What we did with the 30-plus applications for the town manager was that they were packaged up and sent to us confidentially. I don't know how comfortable I am doing that with, with this committee unless you tell me otherwise, because they're, they are confidential at this point until finalists are named.
So could you screen them and put them in Dropbox? Is that what you think, scan them and?
I can do that.
Scan them and put them?
So I've been on a couple of principal searches in the past where we'd have, we had a grading rubric that we all create, we all had. We made a sheet for each individual candidate, and we each made a time where we'd go down to paint, and we sat down and we went through each of the applications, and we came back with our little rubrics. We'd gone through all 45, and we hunkered down and decided who to pull forward to the interview level, which would be, I don't know, a dozen or so people that we'd interview or 10 or so, with a goal of bringing forward three. So I don't know if that's the most efficient way to do it, having, you know, organizing 10 people to find separate times to come down and look at a 45 individual long pile is a lot, but if you have a simple rubric, it might make some sense.
Yeah, we did a Dropbox, the search I did, they did a Dropbox.
Dropbox is more better.
And then we, we came together to come up with a rubric, and the rubric, we decided as a group, I believe Barry, when, if, if an applicant got a certain score, they were automatically moved into, you know, depending on how the rubric was written, if an applicant got a certain score, they were already all automatically moved forward, you know.
There may also be.
People in that gray area.
There should be an opportunity for us to at least meet to discuss that separation level.
Yeah.
So that, you know, you don't make them arbitrary, because, you know, you always get information about people that you should share, maybe confidentially within that, that group, before we move people to the interview stage or not.
Before what?
Before we move to the interview stage.
Mm-hmm.
So we shouldn't, you know, we should keep that at a flexible meeting, but we should have a meeting to screen.
I mean, the good part is if you scan and put in Dropbox, people can do some of that work.
Oh, that's the best.
At night, at night at home. It's used securely.
Okay. Folks okay with it?
What's the, what's your thought on a decision? When do you think that might happen?
I think we can get it done before the beginning of April. We have a month to do it.
Have a higher recommendation or decision by the beginning of April?
Yes.
Okay.
So should we then set up a meeting where we develop a rubric? Is that the first step in to meet everybody?
I would do that.
And we have, I don't know if, there may be probably different questions, but we have the one we use for the superintendent search, if that's of any value.
Those are lousy questions.
We have.
We've got a few certainly.
Don't touch the question or the result then, that came out of it.
Touche.
I don't want to.
We did.
It's been a while.
Fabrizio's five years?
Something like that. We could go back.
Sheila's six, maybe? I was on, I was on Fabrizio, and I think I was also on Sheila.
Where would I?
I was on Dave Archibald.
Where would I find those, those questions, though?
I can send you the ones for the superintendent search.
I think I have the questions that we use for the special education search, that was the one I was on.
Rubric should be pretty consistent. No, 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 it's gonna be education, it's gonna be this experience.
But if anybody has those.
The criteria we set, prior experience.
I know I have my big.
That's a big one. If you box out everyone who's never been a principal before, it's a big deal.
Yeah, okay.
You don't wanna like, you don't wanna set arbitrary standards that we, that we think are gonna box out good candidates.
Okay.
And I have no special person in mind this time, so.
Okay. Great, thank you. Vouchers and bills?
They're all set, thank you.
Thank you. School committee reports, athletics?
Meeting next Wednesday.
Okay. Budget met tonight. We essentially talked about the, actually the things we just talked about here in detail, the budget, the budget changes Joanne offered, the budget impact of the new school project, and those focus groups that we want to kind of dig down. And then that would result in some budgetary numbers.
Mini grant, Matt.
Great.
Thank you, Joanne. The, the, we had, it was good informational meeting, especially since I'm a rookie, it was very helpful, very helpful. Joanne, the submissions deadline is now May 4th. Joanne Cuff suggested that April 27th, the submission people check in with the, for administrative review, for things like vendor review, if they have equipment, best place to get it, right?
Yeah.
You fill in on that, that was excellent, because they found hard, they weren't going to buy, sometimes going to buying groups, they were going to places where you couldn't buy from, and so.
Actually, it was a suggestion made by the administrative assistants, I meet with them periodically, and they have found that, they thought it would be helpful if we asked applicants to stop by their offices to, before they developed their budget, kind of go over their ideas about what vendors they might use. For example, there are certain things, the, the teachers do their due diligence and search for things at the lowest price, but they may choose a vendor that we don't necessarily use, like Walmart or Target, and they don't know about buying groups that we might belong to. And so they suggested that with a quick review, the budgets would be built better, and it would save heartbreak and work after the fact.
Or coming back to the mini grant for more money, or earmarking money that then isn't used.
Correct.
So, and then, then lastly, an informational meeting will be in March-ish, which is not decided yet.
March-ish?
Yeah, well, we're already in March-ish, so, sometime in March. So it was good, it was great.
Great.
I was excited.
Good group, nice group.
Good. Now that I got off of it.
That's not.
Thanks, Joanne. That's a nice transition.
Much better this.
Operations.
Need to meet, I think.
Need to meet.
We need to schedule a meeting.
Okay.
I think we said that last time, so I can send some dates around.
Great.
Again, see when you all are available.
It's here.
Okay.
Policy is meeting this week as well?
Next week.
All the time.
Excellent. Policy's working hard.
Is that part two of G?
I think it's part three.
Of G?
It's the final section.
Final section.
Sequel.
And that's it?
Yes.
Because we.
Okay.
Did Laura post that?
Yes, I believe she did.
Everything's posted for next week.
Okay, yes, yeah.
So I had a long conversation with Tom Gallagher on the phone, and I know he talked to you as well, Brian. We've had trouble with our, I don't know what we call an architect, our vendor, whatever, basically since a meeting in December, where he promised to have all the updated plans ready and our biddable specs to come out. He's been a ghost. He's not responded to phone calls, he's not come to meetings, he's not, Tom kind of sent him an ultimatum phone message the other day, I don't know the response to that, but we're just waiting for him to come board with whatever we need to move the project ahead, and we've been sitting on our hands for three months. So I don't know if that's gone any further.
The, when I spoke with Tom.
I probably spoke to him Tuesday.
Was it Tuesday?
Yeah. He's spoken to you already at that point, I don't know if anything came back since.
He had spoken to me that afternoon when I was leaving, or evening when I was leaving?
He's spoken to you already.
Okay, then, no, I haven't heard a word.
Do you have?
Because he, the last I heard was that he, he promised he would call him the next day, he never called that entire day, and it was like 5:30, 6 o'clock in the evening.
So basically, we have detailed plans from our first iteration, we made adjustments to that plan in December at a meeting, we made some recommendations, he was gonna update the plan, make it ready for biddable RFP, and so we can send it out, and so we could campaign for getting more money for it. And he's been a ghost since, we are waiting for him to come back. He actually did no-show to meeting in December, I think.
Yeah, and he said that he was sick.
He was sick. So since then, we haven't seen him, and I don't know what's going on.
He's got the big job.
He doesn't have money of ours or anything, it's just, he's got the plans, he's made the plans, he's adjusting the plans, and he built the field, so it's hard to, I guess we would go forward without him, but right now we're sitting on our hands waiting for him to come back to the table. A frustrating situation.
He got the big.
What do you do now?
He got the big part of the job, yeah.
And he's all set.
And it's the little part of the job.
He's all set.
So, yeah, so right now, I don't know what our plan is, we have a, we have an athletic meeting next week, where I assume by then we'll have some momentum going forward.
Something, yeah.
And Brian and Tom and I will sit down and talk about maybe opening it again or planning it again. We have his plans, we'd have to bring him to somebody else to go move on. But it makes it questionable for this year. Again, we, just to update you, we have a building ready to go in that was about $750, $800,000. We had about $500,000 available for that already. We need to kind of finish off the funding for it, whether through paying grants or other funds, and fundraising. And there are other things that we could add to the field, including storage buildings, et cetera, that would make the project even better, which we had talked about, and so all that was part of our campaign for fundraising, which we kind of needed hundreds for. And a lot of it's failed, the momentum of the school has kind of gotten away with it some extent.
Okay. All right, thank you. We did the school building committee update already. Is there any new business?
Two things. Just comments, I guess, more than anything, maybe a question. I don't recall, the, I know that we are in the process of implementing, I think it's actually happening now, some of the new drug screening that was required by the state as part of the opioids legislation.
Yep.
I don't remember talking about that, and I guess, so it just sort of snuck up on me when I started looking into it a little bit, and so I was thinking a bit about whether that's something we should have talked about, and I got some questions on it that I wasn't 100% sure of the answer to, the procedures we're using. I know there was a letter sent out to explain some of this.
Yep.
I guess the other thing that I wondered about when I looked at the legislation was, is this costing us anything to comply with? It's a state mandate, and the state law clearly says, subject to funding, but as is often the case with the state, they require you to do it even though you're not getting any funding. So is this an opportunity, even though it may be a perfectly well-intentioned program to implement? Is it something we ought to be pushing back on for that purpose alone? I guess I'm curious to get your thoughts on this.
Great questions. I, I think that it was administered already.
I think it's gonna be March 7.
Well, they already did one of the screenings, and maybe, maybe, maybe it's by school, yeah.
Because we have to do two different grade levels, right?
Yeah.
You have to be doing the seven.
Okay, so maybe the middle, the middle school already went. And it was done in-house during the school day, so I don't know that there was any additional cost to it.
Like this is screening kids?
Yes.
Really?
Yeah. It kind of snuck up on us.
I didn't see it.
Yeah.
Do we talk about it at all? I don't remember.
No, we did not.
You know, probably 15 years ago, I proposed random drug testing at the high school, and I got blown up, parents came in, it was crazy.
This is a confidential...
Confidential.
It's a Q and A screening.
It's a questionnaire, it's an interview.
My parents testified that this was happening.
They are. You got an email. And you have an option to opt out.
And we did have some parents opt out.
I don't remember that.
It just started.
So, it's coming?
And it's just two grades?
My elementary school student won't be getting that, so...
No, no, I will share that, you know, as part of Ipswich Aware, that I'm involved with. Coming up, some later in the month, we're trying to work out the logistics of it, we're going to be doing the equivalent of the YRBS, the Youth Behavior Risk Survey. We're actually going to be looking to use the Gloucester model that they had developed, some of it grant-funded, some of it I'll be looking toward the money lady to support. But the Gloucester survey in particular asks questions about student well-being that the YRBS doesn't ask, and so the Gloucester survey is a much more thorough survey. By having our students complete that, it provides us a great baseline, and we'll do it every couple of years moving forward, but it also enables us to apply for grants that we're currently not eligible for, because we don't have the data to support the application for the grant. So, if you wanted a formal presentation on that, I'd be glad to do that moving forward, but that's not mandated by law, that's something that we've talked length about with the Ipswich Police Department and other folks at Ipswich Aware around the benefits of doing it for our kids.
Right. Are you getting much feedback from parents about the survey?
That one hasn't been announced yet.
No, no, about the, no, about the, I'm calling the wrong word, the screening that's being done.
Yes, but no. Less than a handful of parents that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Interesting.
The other, I guess it's just maybe a little bit of a question, but I think we've done a nice job of responding to the events in Florida to reassure parents about what we do, but given the uncertainty over what, if anything, will happen in response to that, I think we should, A, it feels as if we ought to have more of a conversation as a school committee, maybe as a school community, about this issue of school violence, and it's not just a school violence issue, it's a societal problem. And we should be prepared for having to take positions on issues that are recommendations that may come out, including things like the idea of arming teachers. So, there's hopefully much discussion to happen about this, and who knows what the recommendations will be, but I think we should be prepared to take...
Are there many places that's a real issue? I don't think Massachusetts has that coming.
We may not, but it could happen at a national level.
Yep.
So, it's just, it feels like something we ought to be prepared to be vocal on. I don't know what the position of the committee or the community would be on these topics, but I don't think we should just stay silent on it.
Agreed. I know that the students, and I should have done this when Chris was here earlier, I know the students are talking about doing something as part of the March 14 walkout.
Yes.
And so, we're trying to organize that with the students, and the police, and the community, just so that there's some organization and understanding. I don't want kids just walking out of the school.
Is that going to be a sanctioned event, then? Sanctioned activity?
The students are organizing an event, and the staff will be there to support students on either side, because as, to your point, you know, it is, to some degree, a political issue, and I anticipate that there's going to be students that want to go outside and have a walkout, and there are going to be students who are inclined to stay in and not, and the same goes for the staff. So, is it a sanctioned event? I'm going to say no. Is it an event that the school district will be part of and support our students in voicing their opinions? Yes.
So, we're not going to, I was just thinking about the Texas where they're threatening to suspend children who...
No.
No, no.
I didn't think we would, but I was just clarifying that.
No, that's the first I've heard of that, but no, no, we're not going there. I just want to make sure that in the process, we have systems in place to support the students and to maintain a safe environment.
And it can be a positive event.
Exactly. Exactly. If we're going to have, you know, if we're going to have 600 kids walking out for 17 minutes and all be in one area, I want to make sure that the police are involved with us.
People are saying, absolutely.
It's got to be organized.
Well, because one of the biggest concerns, maybe of many of us, how I certainly do, is that the conversation has been, perhaps intentionally, narrowly focused, or is attempted to be narrowly focused, to a school problem. And the worry there is then that puts all the burden on the school systems with new security requirements and so on and so forth, with every likelihood of no funding coming to support them. And A, it's the wrong frame around the problem, and B, it's an additional responsibility we don't need. So, I think we need to sort of guard against that happening, it sort of being thrown on to the schools as the school problem. Speaking out is one way to push back on it.
I agree, but I think what I'm hearing from kids who I'm talking with is they just want to express their concern about the situation.
Oh, I'm not questioning what the kids are doing.
Not at all about the school, but just they're trying to just learn how to use their voices.
No, I just mean just nationally.
Yeah.
It's, we're talking about a school violence problem, and it's much bigger than that.
Oh, yeah.
Wherever you fall on the political spectrum, it's much bigger than that.
Absolutely.
What time is that on March 14?
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock.
17 minutes.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Consent.
Can I ask that we hold the minutes from the Thursday, February 8 meeting?
Hold them off?
Yes, please.
Sure.
Is there a problem with them?
I just have, I have a question. I need some clarification.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So, the consent agenda for tonight is move the Ipswich School Committee to accept a $500 donation to support the FRC robotics team to be deposited into the high school gift account. Move the Ipswich School Committee to accept a $575 donation to support the robotics team to be deposited into the high school gift account.
Second?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No, I'd like to discuss the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you wanted to discuss with Laura. Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Go ahead.
And it may not, it may not make a difference, I'm not sure, but we made a point of taking each one of the budget centers under advisement when the official vote, and there's no votes reflected anywhere in the minutes.
Oh, for the budgets for the individual schools?
The individual schools and central office were all presented, and we did, again, take it under advisement, and voted. But those, that's not reflected anywhere in the minutes, and I'm just curious as to whether that, I don't know if it has any impact on the what happened tonight, probably not, but does it, I don't know, I'm just asking for clarification, that's all. Historically, we have always voted to take budgets under advisement following the presentations.
We did.
No, I know, but it's not in the minutes. The votes are not in the minutes, they're not recorded anywhere.
The vote to amend the minutes to suggest that we took the budgets under advisement.
I don't know, maybe it doesn't mean anything, but if it, I don't know, I just wanted to clarify.
Just scrolling through for a second.
And also, I want to approve that I read the minutes.
What did you say?
Nothing. Yeah, exactly. Show them.
What did you say?
He reads the minutes. Can we second that adjustment?
Somebody should.
I second that adjustment.
Okay, so, is there a motion to approve with the...
amended minutes.
Amended minutes. How do we say that?
Hmm?
I don't know how you're going to capture it.
Approve the minutes as amended.
So, why don't we just...
That's what you're looking for.
I'm sorry.
Here's what...
Why don't we just pull them back? Why don't we just don't approve them tonight and pull it back and amend them, and then have them be amended?
I can have Laura review the...
I don't know how much of a big deal it is, I just wanted to...
They need to be added.
Yeah, the votes need to be added.
Votes need to be reflected in the minutes.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I don't think it's simply blanket statement, we vote, you know, I think you have to capture who made the motion, who seconded the vote.
Yep.
Okay, so why don't we just hold off on the minutes and ask Laura to amend them?
So, I'll move that, that's fine.
Okay.
I'll second that.
You don't need to vote, you're just not tabling the minutes.
I'll not vote.
Thank you.
And vote to adjourn.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
So, I'll move it.
I'm going like this, sorry.
Okay. Telec over, I'm just nodding.
I'm sorry.
So, stay tuned, folks, I guess this storm is changing.
To what?
Been trying to...
Nikes.
Texting and...
Mics are on.
Second. Second.